Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, April 18th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Over the past two weekends, April 5th through the 7th and April 12th through the 14th, Sedgwick County hosted an e-waste, electronic recycling event. And I am pleased to report that we had nearly 4,000 cars come through the West Yard over those two weekends and dispose of 522,000 pounds of material in our community. So it's very exciting news for us. And right now, I'd like to take this time to bring up Krista from the Division on Aging to talk a little bit about some of our programs.
Good morning, Commissioners. Krista Levett, Division on Aging. The Wichita-Sedgwick County Hoarding Coalition, in collaboration with the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, and a variety, wide variety of city, state, and community organizations will host the Hands-On Approach to Hoarding 2018 Conference on April the 20th. This year's keynote presenter is Dr. Christiana Bratti Otis, who is currently an Assistant Professor at the University of British Columbia. Dr. Bratti Otis has completed extensive research on hoarding and multidisciplinary community interventions. Our coalition was one of five around the country that was selected to participate in one of the studies led by Dr. Bratti Otis and her colleagues at the Boston University in 2008. The formation of the coalition began April of 2006 and was a collaborative effort amongst Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, Wichita, um, excuse me, Department of Children and Family, and the Mental Health Association, as well as Prairie View and other community partners, to combat the issue of hoarding and to develop collaborative efforts to deal with it in our community. Hoarding is not extensive collections. It is when an individual cannot use rooms and/or furniture for its intended purpose, or housing more animals than he or she can adequately care for. Hoarding starts as young as age five, and it occurs in all social and economic groups. Hoarding is a problem for the community because of health hazards, poor quality of life, reduction of property values, and uses an extensive amount of resources. This long-term coalition is consistently working on ways to assist individuals in our community who excessively collect. We have a support group called the Clutter Cleaners Club that meets every third Wednesday at 2:30 for individuals that are interested in finding ways to overcome this issue. If you need a referral to the coalition, please visit our website at www.sedgwickcounty.org/hoarding-coalition, or phone us at 316-660-5144. Are there any questions?
I don't see any questions, but we do appreciate the information today. And thank you very much for what you do for our citizens.
Thank you.
All right. In a brief rundown of the agenda today, there are two board appointments. We'll be celebrating our Project Search interns. We have an economic development item related to Spirit Aero Systems. There are three grants for corrections and items to consider on bid board. So with that, Chairman, I will let you kick off the meeting.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it very much. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for April 18th, 2018. I would do want to welcome the folks that are here from Project Search. We're going to recognize you here in a little bit. I want to also welcome all the other folks that we have in the audience today. We have a full house here. I'm sure that we have a number of people that are watching us on Channel 8 and that can also watch us on the Internet. So I want to welcome each and every one of the folks to our meeting today. With that, Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Dr. Keith Peter, Cheney Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I'd like to read a recommendation before I pray, if you don't mind, for those of you that may not know the history behind prayers at public forums. I'm quoting Benjamin Franklin at the Constitutional Convention. He says, "A small progress we've made after four or five weeks of attendance and continual reasonings with each other over our different sentiments leads to a melancholy proof of the imperfection of human understanding. In this situation, groping as it were in dark to find political truth, scarcely able to distinguish it when presented to us, how has it happened that we have not hitherto come to the thought of humbly imploring and applying to the Father of Lights to illuminate our understanding?" He then talks about the many evidences of God's intervention in the Revolutionary War. He says, "Those of us who are engaged in this struggle have observed frequent instances of His providence in our favor. Have we now forgotten that powerful friend?" I have lived a long time, and he's addressing George Washington, who was the President of the Constitutional Convention. "I have lived for a long time and have, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of the truth that God governs in the affairs of men. If a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without His notice, is it probable that an empire cannot rise with His aid? We have been assured in the Holy Scriptures the truths that except the Lord build the house they labor in vain that build it. I believe this, and I believe that without His concurring aid, we shall succeed in this political building no better than the builders of the Tower of Babel. I therefore beg leave to move that henceforth prayers imploring the assistance of heaven and its blessings on our deliberations be held in this assembly every morning before we proceed to business, and that one or more of the clergy of the city be requested to officiate in this service. So such prayers have been a tradition since the founding of our country, and I'm honored to be a part of it. Can we pray together?" Father, much has changed since Benjamin Franklin acknowledged that truth a couple of hundred years ago. And what has not changed is human hearts and perspectives, reasonings, deliberations, foresight, and wisdom. Lord, I'm not aware of all of the events that are going to be before this committee this morning, but you are. I'm not aware of the hearts and the motives behind every petition and every suggestion, but you are. I'm incapable, as are all of us, of recognizing where the different choices that we might make will take us as individuals and as a community, but you are. So your word says that if we will acknowledge you in all of our ways, you'll direct our steps. So we pause to acknowledge your presence, your power, your perspective, and we ask that you would guide with grace, with kindness, with compassion, and with wisdom these decisions today. For we ask it in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Peter, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate your attendance. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Enrew.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We have one speaker signed up today, Mr. Alan Trury. Please approach the podium, and you have three minutes, please.
Okay, I want to, I appreciated the words of wisdom, hearing the words of Benjamin Franklin and his perspective on why we pray before meetings is very enlightening. Religion was very important to the founding fathers, and there's also a lot of other rowdy things that the folks that were involved in forming this country were fond of doing as well. I came here from Colorado. My grandparents lived here my entire life. I want to emphasize I've always been very politically active. My brother was a county commissioner and city councilman in Loveland, Colorado. And I was heavily involved with the process of getting cannabis and marijuana and such, as I spoke to before. I also have had people very important to me pass away from cancer recently. And I had a client that I took care of back in Colorado commit suicide when she was, when I informed her that I was going to have to leave Colorado and wasn't going to be able to care for her anymore. And come here because of just things that took place around my activism back in Colorado. And it's very difficult because I regularly have disturbing dreams because there's two ladies that I was involved with back in Colorado that committed suicide. And I regularly have dreams of, I don't know which one of them is coming and besieging to me in my dreams, but it's, it tends to be kind of heavy and disturbing, just to put it lightly. My mother has COPD and congestive heart failure, and it gets difficult sometimes. And I just really want to emphasize to you that this situation with Andrew Finch and Officer Rapp. I approached Lisa yesterday and wanted to speak to her, and because I was wearing my boss's uniform, she didn't, she didn't trust me. She didn't want to talk to me. I was wearing my suit like what I had on the last time I spoke to you, and she felt it. Her response was, "Who are you? And why do you want to talk to me?" And then, as I was leaving, I stepped into the men's room, and it was full of law enforcement officers. And I'll have to say it was a little frosty because I got up and left with everybody that was speaking negatively. And I have no negative feelings towards law enforcement. I respect Chief Ramsey in a major way. I think that he's a wonderful man. I feel that we are very, very blessed to have him as our police chief. I was at the Sunflower Community Action Center when he was giving his, he was being given a welcome, and he was speaking to the group. And that was the night of the XL mass shooting. And he was, you know, casually meeting with everybody, and people kept on coming in and talking to him. And he got up and left at one point, and he came back in and he remained very calm. I'll wrap it up real quick here. And after the meeting, as we were leaving, I asked him what was going on, and he told me of the mass shooting. And as we were walking in the parking lot, he approached the car that I drive, my mother's car. I had a bunch of bumper stickers on it, you know, Barack Obama and various other Democratic activism bumper stickers. And Chief Ramsey says, "Oh my God, there's a Democrat in Kansas." And I laughed. And I said, "Well, there's, there are more of us out here by Realize the Atmosphere." And I really do want to emphasize that I appreciate my chance to be able to speak to you, and I'll wrap it up. Thank you, and God bless you all. I appreciate your service.
Thank you for being here today. I don't have anyone else that has signed up to speak on today's public agenda. If anyone else is in the audience, though, we give you the opportunity. If you'd like to speak now, please approach the podium. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of David Kennedy from the Salem Township Board Clerk position.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Items A and B can be taken together. Item A is the resignation of David Kennedy as Salem Township Clerk. This item should be considered in conjunction with item B because item B is a resolution appointing Ms. Joanie Hobbs to fill that expired term, to serve as Salem Township Clerk. Commissioner Michael O'Donnell is recommending that Ms. Hobbs be appointed, and her term would expire on January 14th of 2019. I'm told that she may be in attendance here today to take the oath, and I would urge adoption of both of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready to make a motion if I may.
Please do.
But before I do that, I'd like to thank Mr. Kennedy for his service the last couple of years, and also to Ms. Hobbs for taking on this important role in the township. And Clem Dickerson is our Township Trustee, and so he and I have been in communication over the last couple of weeks about getting this filled. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of David Kennedy, and I also move that we appoint Ms. Joanie Hobbs to the Salem Township as clerk.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Here, Ms. Hobbs. Joanie Hobbs.
Yeah. Good morning. Okay, I'll provide the oath, then you say I do, or I swear at the end. If you raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Salem Township Clerk. So help me God. I do. There you go. Want to make any comments? Nope. That's it.[1035.23][1035.23](Laughter)[1036.23][1036.23](Applause)
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, resolution appointing Lamont Anderson to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. Item C is resolution appointing Mr. Lamont Anderson to the Third District Citizens' Advisory Board. This position had been held by Mr. Carl Koster, who passed away recently. Chairman Dennis is recommending that Mr. Anderson be appointed to this position. His term would expire on March 21 of 2021, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Again, Carl Koster was a vital member of our community and also of my Citizens Advisory Board, and his loss is a great loss to all of us. But we do have Mr. Lamont Anderson, who is stepping up to fill the vacant position that I have on my Citizens Advisory Boards. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lamont Anderson to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board. Second. And we have a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And I do not believe that Mr. Anderson is here today. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, Project Search Graduation Recognition.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeanette Livingston, the Assistant Director of the Sedgwick County Developmental Disability Organization. I'm glad to be here to recognize the 2018 graduating class of our Project Search interns. As you know, Project Search is a collaborative project with Wichita Public Schools. It provides select students with intellectual and developmental disabilities real-world work experience. These students passed on a lot of the fun stuff they could have been doing in school to invest in their future and hopefully promote employment and get kind of a leg up on their competition as far as jobs. Project Search students work about 20 hours a week. They do it three 10-week rotations. That allows them to explore their kind of vocational interests and refine some skills. We greatly appreciate the Sedgwick County Divisions that participate and host interns. This year, we had a total of 10 divisions that participated. That included Exploration Place, Print Shop and Mailroom, The Courthouse Cafe, Aging, Zoo, the CDDO, Comcare Medical Records, Sedgwick County Records Management, Finance, and Human Resources. And before I move on to the students, I did want to thank the staff. We had a teacher, Cheryl Hutcheson, and a job coach this year, and they were both brand new, and so they really had to hit the ground running. And they've done an excellent job, and I want to thank you both. So without further ado, I want to introduce the graduating students. We have James Benjamin. And James interned at The Courthouse Cafe, Division on Aging, Sedgwick County Zoo, and with Human Resources. Through these internships, James has learned to speak up about what he likes and what he doesn't, and to really advocate for himself. James is a hard worker and is searching for a part-time job where he can be active. James has excellent computer skills and attention to detail. Olivia Berlin. Olivia interned with the Division on Aging, the Sedgwick County Records Management and Finance. Olivia has learned to answer incoming phone calls, process mail, alphabetize mail, and complete her tasks with accuracy. She's learned to have confidence in herself and her decision. She's been searching for an office or a customer service job where she can use her friendly, can-do attitude, and she's actually been successful. I found out yesterday that she starts Monday as an office assistant at Center Industries. That's Olivia. Jordan Kraft. Jordan interned at Exploration Place and Custodial Services and the Print Shop Mailroom. He's learned to use all of the print shop equipment, his favorite being the mail meter machine. He enjoys delivering mail to the county departments, and he has learned that he has a talent for focusing on his work. He's overcome a lot of his shyness and has been better about learning how to ask for help. He has a great sense of humor, is trustworthy, and very responsible. Jordan is looking for part-time employment with an organization where he can be a team member and help people. Yay, Jordan.[1328.53][1328.53](Applause) Lauren Cruz. Lauren interned at Exploration Place and the Explore Store, Comcare Medical Records, and the Print Shop Mailroom. Lauren has learned to focus on her work and was able to achieve 100% accuracy at Comcare Medical Records. She's learning to use a variety of office and print shop machines, and Lauren says that she's really learned how to be more independent this year. Lauren would like to gain part-time employment in an office or a customer service position.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah. I would like to thank all of you for being here to the Commissionary Meeting, and thank you for all of the support, including Mitch.
And Stephanie.
Johana, Johana, how did I get that wrong? Johana Tiki. Johana interned at the Print Shop Mailroom, CDDO, and is now at the Via Christie Nursing Station on the cardiac care floor. She has learned confidence this year and knows that she can do anything she tries. Johana is very good at following procedures, likes to feel accomplished, and has a talent for teaching others. Johana would like to find a part-time job where she can be around people and use her organizational skills. It's Johana. Thank you.[1416.03][1416.03](Applause)
I would like to thank you for coming, and thank you for supporting us.[1428.53][1428.53](Applause)
So before I finish here, I just wanted to reiterate how important the Sedgwick County Division's participation is, and that this is really a win-win opportunity. It's not just that the students gain excellent skills and abilities, but the departments are really the big winners as well. And to speak a little bit about that, we have the Sedgwick County Treasurer, Lynda Kazire, and her employee, Ashley Thompson.
Yes.[1459.73][1459.73](Applause) Hi, I'm Ashley Thompson. I've been here almost three years at my job, and I am always responsible, punctual, and dependable. And I learn new tasks from my supervisor if she is not available or not busy. And I was learning how to be accurate on my work, and I was being reliable on everything. And you are a good person to work with, and I have a lot of punctuality, and I am very respectful and kind to others. And I, and coworkers need to ask my boss before I get help from them of their task, if it's available from my supervisor. And I help each other with recycling if it's full. And I was being a good, hard worker, and I have an excellent supervisor. And I am so grateful to one another. And I do new stuff, new stuff at work unless my boss shows me how to do it before I do it independently, on my own. And thank you so much, all. And I'm Ashley Thompson. You are Richard, Dave, David, Michael, and Jim. And have a good day today.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you. Oh, I think Commissioner O'Donnell has a couple of questions.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I did have a couple of questions, Ashley, but you answered most of them. But I just want to know, I just want to know, do you like Lynda?[1641.03][1641.03](Laughter)
She's a good county treasurer.
That's a great endorsement. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.[1654.26][1654.26](Applause)
I just want to say thank you to all of you for continuing your support of Project Search. Once again, I'm putting the challenge out for other county departments to not only have the interns, but actually get some people hired. We've got to get these young people employed, gainfully employed with Sedgwick County. We need to go to the City of Wichita, start working with them. I know a lot of private businesses need to get involved, so we need some help, guys. So let's put that on our list. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe.[1687.33][1687.33](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I am, I'm very impressed with James, Olivia, Jordan, Lauren, and Johana, and Ashley. And I just want to say, if they continue doing what they're doing now, they can be used at a lot of great opportunities across this entire city. So I love what they're doing. I just want to pick up those words that Ashley used. She used the words "on time," "faithful," "accurate," "reliable," "dependable," "responsible." If we can get employees like that in other places around town, we need more. We need more. And Lynda wants to say thank you for hiring them, hiring Ashley. She's a tremendous individual, demonstrating a great skill set in our community and for the county. So appreciate her dedication for three years, and I look forward to many more years of her service to the county. But I'm impressed with all of, all of the presentations this morning. I'll say thank you to Director Jeanette Livingston for, for being part of this program and making this happen. It's important, and I'm impressed. And I just want to say thank you for giving us good news this morning. We always like good news, and this has made my day. So I appreciate all you've done to make this a good event today. Oh, by the way, I seen in my backup material that there's some kind of cookies or something coming up here.
That's right. That's right.[1760.33][1760.33](Laughter)
We want to point that out.
A reception immediately following. It's in the county boardroom. Hopefully, you guys will be able to finish up shortly and come get a cookie and enjoy, and just tell the Project Search students the best wishes.
Well, thank you. Again, on behalf of the entire Sedgwick County Commission, we do appreciate what you do. We appreciate the students being here today for the graduation. We hope that we can get Commissioner Ranza to be quiet for part of the meeting today so that we can get out of here early.[1791.33][1791.33](Laughter) So that we can join you. So that we can join you. One other thing that I should have mentioned, we do have one of our electeds in the audience, and she's already spoken, but she had a birthday the other day, and it was the anniversary of her 40th birthday, and we want to say, say happy birthday to our treasurer. Again, thank you all very much for being here today. We sincerely, it brightens our day. It's a great way of starting our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, Presentation of Retirement Certificate to Donna Hon Zip Thai.
Eileen, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Eileen McNichol, your Chief HR Officer, and we have the opportunity this morning to honor and thank one of our Register of Deeds employees who has served our community with dedication, commitment, and pride. It's my honor this morning to present to you Donna Hazipta, who has reached a major milestone in her employment, her retirement after 23 years of service. Donna was hired on July 3, 1995, as a Fiscal Associate in the Register of Deeds Office, becoming a Register of Deeds Deputy on June 23, 2013. Her last day of service with us will be Friday, April 27, 2018. Donna, Donna not only served the citizens of our community, but also helped the Register of Deeds Office organize many United Way activities over the years. She was also passionate about softball. She started playing at the age of nine and played until she was 41. Donna is a descendant of Comanche Chief Tin Bears. She is half Kiowa and half Comanche. She has three children, Beth, Rob, and TJ. She also has 10 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, one great-granddog, and one great-grandbird. With all of this, Donna is going to be keeping very busy, along with volunteering with United Way and fishing. Congratulations, and thank you, Donna, for 23 years of dedication to Sedgwick County.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the time that I had here at Sedgwick County has been so wonderful. I enjoyed my job so much over the years, and all the people that I got to know were so helpful, and it was just like a big family, and I'm going to miss everyone tremendously. Thank you.
Donna, thank you very much for being here with us today, and good luck on your retirement. We're going to miss you. And while I was mentioning elected officials, I should have saw, just now noticed that Tanya Buckingham is in the back of the room. Thank you very much for being here with us today. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, authorize the execution of Project Eclipse Development Agreement with the City of Wichita, Spirit Aero Systems, and Eclipse Investment Association.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. I'd like to present today, we're revisiting Project Eclipse, and as the clerk said, to authorize the execution of Project Eclipse Development Agreement. The key thing about this are the partners that are here today, and I'd like to recognize them real quick before I say just a few words. First, from Spirit, we do have Jim Coca, Debbie Gann, and Sam Sackett, who were pivotal in putting this agreement together. Very excited for them to be here. Getting to see them a lot. We may need to put them on the payroll. Also, from the Greater Wichita Partnership, friends and partners, Jeff Floor and Andrew Nave, who honestly have put a lot of work into this and worked a lot of nights, a lot of phone calls, and I appreciate all their hard work, continued hard work, not only on this, but everything they do. They do a great job. I just want to thank them personally for it. Also, those not in the room that really had, you know, a lot to do with this, from the city side, Bob Layton, and of course Scott Rigby. Scott, along with Tom, probably between the both of our organizations, did a lot of the, the hard work, bringing Bob and I in for the decision points, but certainly, they did a lot of hard work, and I wanted to recognize them, along with Brent Shelton, Joe Norton, a lawyer, you've got to have a good lawyer, and he certainly is for us on, on this and many issues. There he is. So I wanted to thank them personally, but also one that haven't seen very often, but she certainly has helped us out on this, and that's Patty Bradley from WSU, a research economist and instructor out at WSU, but her email and phone has been worn out, especially in the last couple of weeks, since we've gotten towards the end of this deal. So I want to thank you personally for, for that, and for showing up today, and the questions you may be asked. I appreciate you, you being here. Last, Commissioners, last December, when you approved the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Wichita and Spirit Aero Systems related to Project Eclipse, I know you remember that, but it was last November when we started working with the three partners in trying to bring you this project today. We met regularly. This is one of those projects because of Spirit and what a great partner they are for this community, and how important they are for this community. It was one thing that we knew right from the beginning, that we wanted to work and collaborate with them and be good partners, and we definitely wanted to see them thrive and survive in this community because it just benefits us all. For this particular presentation, we're going to do it in three parts. First, Brent Shelton, he'll come up and discuss the item from the county's financial economic development perspective, and then I'll ask Jeff Floor if he could come up and talk about the impact of this particular public-private partnership. But I think we definitely would like to hear from Debbie Gann, who will come up and talk from the Spirit Aero Systems side and wrap up the presentation on what it, on what this project means from the company's perspective. Three great speakers for three great perspectives to help you in this decision-making process. Once the three speakers have addressed the board, we'll then open up the floor for questions.
Thank you.
All right, Brent.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners and Chairman, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance, and I'm here today to speak about Project Eclipse. As the manager said, what the item for your consideration is this morning is the approval of the Home Rule Resolution that would authorize the execution of the Development Agreement and the supporting documents for the Project Eclipse public-private partnership. Project Eclipse is a public-private partnership between Spirit Aero Systems, Sedgwick County, and Wichita, Kansas. To give you a little bit of background, Spirit Aero Systems is a global leader in aerospace manufacturing that is headquartered here in our community. In 2005, when Spirit was formed as a spin-off from the Boeing Company, they had 7,000 employees in the local area. Since that time, they've experienced growth, and at the end of last year, had an employment footprint of 10,940 employees in the local economy. That makes them the largest employer in Sedgwick County. They're also the second highest taxpayer in the county, and last year, county revenues alone from Spirit's taxes exceeded $3 million. As the manager mentioned, we were approached by Spirit last fall. Because of some demand that they had, they needed to hire more workers, they needed to make job and investment growth, and they were looking at a suitable place to locate that, that economic activity. In addition to Sedgwick County, there were six other sites that were competing vigorously for this expansion. We were successful in bringing Spirit here and maintaining their current employment levels, and as a result of that, we have the Project Eclipse public-private partnership to share with you today. Let's just summarize a little bit what this economic development agreement looks like. I'm going to start with talking about the public commitments that are being made, and then we'll go into the private sector commitments being made by Spirit. The agreement, the development agreement will be, will create the Eclipse Investment Association. The Eclipse Investment Association is a venture that will be comprised of Spirit Aero Systems, Sedgwick County, and the city. Each of those will form that investment association, and it'll be used to fund and then own some real property that will be the catalyst for this expansion at the Spirit campus. The funding for the Eclipse Investment Association from the public side will come in terms of $7 million real property investment made by Sedgwick County, a $3 million investment in that real estate made by the City of Wichita, and to get the city's commitment at par with the county, they have a purple pipe project that had a $3.5 million system enhancement fee associated to, with it for Spirit, that they're waiving that. They've also committed to another $1 million in water quality improvements to the water that's being provided to the Spirit campus. In addition to that, the city will issue industrial revenue bonds that would carry a property tax abatement for five-plus, five years as a result of this partnership. The Spirit commitments would be, first of all, within the Eclipse Investment Association to fund the balance that's necessary to complete the first building that's in this big project. Currently, that building is estimated at about $23 million. So if you have the $7 million investment from the city, or from the county, the $3 million investment from the city, Spirit's going to be putting in $13 million into that facility as well. If the building comes in at $24 million, they're going to be putting in 14. So they're on the hook for the balance after that $10 million public investment. One of the unique things about the commitments that are being made by Spirit is that they're committing to maintain and add employees with a commitment for 20 years. That's a big deal in the community to have that commitment of employment for that length of time. But remember, that current employment figure at the end of last year, at 10,940 employees, they've committed to maintain that level going forward for 20 years, and also add 1,000 new jobs at their facility and maintain that level over 20 years. Those 1,000 jobs come in the first two years, in 2018 and 2019. They're not just jobs, these are good value-added jobs with a base wage level of $56,000 per year. That in and of itself is an over a billion-dollar commitment from Spirit to this local community in terms of employment and payroll. And I mentioned that these were value-added jobs. That's one of the things that we look for in our economic development policy. A value-added job is one that exports product and imports money. It doesn't just circulate existing dollars within the local economy, but because things are manufactured purchased outside the area, that money flows in as those products flow out. Those types of job also create additional jobs to support them. We'll get into that in just a minute. The other commitment that Spirit is making is an additional $435 million net new capital investment in this region. In 2016, they agreed to $1 billion of expansion. This is in addition to that. And as a security measure, they're going to become the mortgager on the building that's owned by Eclipse Investment Association. The mortgage will be in favor of Eclipse, and it's an insurance policy in the event that some of the conditions of the deal are not met. So let's talk about that for a minute. What if everything doesn't, doesn't go as we wish? Well, as good stewards of public resources, one of the things that the economic development policy calls for are clawbacks, abilities to go into the deal if things, if conditions are not met, and the agreements are not met, and bring back some of the investment that's been made. So there are a couple of different forms on this economic development deal. First of all, in terms of the tax exemptions, there are five-plus-five-year property tax abatement. State law allows for a 10-year abatement, but the City of Wichita's policy now is to grant it for five years and take a look and see if the sufficient amount of investment occurred, if the other parts of that deal are being met, and if so, they can grant the exemption for an additional five years. It gives them that look halfway through the process. That is tied to two things. One, the amount of investment. Spirit will need to be funding these improvements with the industrial revenue bonds, adding additional buildings, bringing in new machinery and equipment. It's also tied to job performance, so there's a 15-year look back that's tied to job performance, and if they haven't met or are not maintaining those net new 1,000 jobs or maintaining that employment level at almost 12,000 jobs. In terms of the building, I mentioned before that there will be a mortgage, that Spirit will be the mortgager on, and basically what that does is secures a liquidated damage clause in the contract that says, if Spirit ceases operating, they're going to pay you back the $10 million that was invested in that real estate. The county and the city would be made whole at that point. If the job numbers fall a little bit short, say they come in at 900 jobs on average over the 20-year period, pro-rata share of that job creation, that would be a 90% success rate, but they're going to owe back to the county 10% penalty on that $10 million. So there are a lot of protections for the public dollars that are being invested in the project, be they in terms of the investment in the real estate, or whether that is property tax forgiveness. As with all of these economic development deals that require tax exemptions or some form of incentive, we have an analysis performed by Wichita State University by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research, and it tells us in fiscal and economic impact terms whether or not this is a good deal, one that we should pursue. So if we look at the costs and the benefits to the county, we see that on the front end of this, there's a $7 million investment made by the county in a $23 million advanced technology warehouse on the Spirit Aero Systems campus. We're also going to forego some property taxes that would be there but for the tax exemptions if this project would happen without those tax abatements. But on the flip side, we're getting some benefits. As we mentioned before, an additional 1,000 value-added jobs that are being filled today, additional infrastructure by Spirit Aero Systems. Of that $435 million that's being invested by Spirit through the industrial revenue bonds, $96 million of that is in real property that will be on the tax roll at the expiration of those tax exemptions. I can't tell you exactly what that'll mean in dollar figures in 10 or 12 years, but if that was on the tax roll today, it would generate about $700,000 additional tax revenue to Sedgwick County alone, not counting the other tax authorities that would receive money from that. As mentioned before, there are potential spin-off jobs in the community as a result of these being value-added jobs, and I think the biggest thing is it helps to ensure a long-term relationship with a very important business partner in our community, our largest employer and second-largest taxpayer, Spirit Aero Systems. But let's look a little deeper into the numbers that were provided to us as part of the economic development impact and the fiscal impact of doing this project. The thing that we focus on first is the county's benefit-to-cost ratio. Every government that's part of the project has a benefit-cost ratio that's calculated. Our policy requires that we at least break even on this benefit-to-cost ratio. We have to have a one-to-one ratio in terms of the fiscal impact to the county government. In other words... In other words, if we forego a dollar in tax or invest a dollar, we need to see that dollar come back. That's our minimum threshold for moving forward with these deals. This one has a 1.08 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio, just in terms of that fiscal impact on Sedgwick County government. Now, in your packets, I need to speak about these numbers a little bit. You received in the packet an analysis that shows a 1.05 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. To explain the difference between what I'm showing you here and what's in that packet, it's determined by the manner in which the county's $7 million investment is treated. The 1.05 to 1 ratio says that the county can invest that $7 million on day one of the project, but we have considered that we will probably finance that over a 10-year period. So at the request of commission, we looked at how does that impact the benefit-to-cost ratio by including those financing charges and considering the fact that we're actually paying it over time over a 10-year period. When those two factors are considered, it increased the benefit-to-cost ratio from 1.05 to 1.08 to 1. I think that's a testament to the fact that the county's in a strong enough financial position to take advantage of low interest rates, low financing costs. One more thing about the benefit-to-cost ratio. Our goal is a 1.3 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. We really would like it to be there. If it's not, then we look at some other factors that pertain to the size of the deal, the overall economic impact, and some other things. Because we could have a very small deal with a tiny bit of economic impact that might have a 1.5, a 2.0, a 3.0, 3.0 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. So let's look globally for a minute at the other parts of our economic development policy and see how these stack up. Policy says, look at three more things. If we get two out of three, it's cause for consideration of the deal. The first one of these is the present value of net benefits. What that is, is putting dollars to the benefit-to-cost ratio. What we're looking for here is that the county would receive back at least a half a million dollars in net benefits. Cash, 500,000 more dollars would come back to the county than would go out in terms of our fiscal impact. This deal generates about $625,000 in net benefits to the county. It's a big enough deal that we're getting back that much more than we're putting out. The second thing we look at is how much real estate is going to go back on the tax roll at the conclusion of the project. We want it to be a big enough deal that there's a $50 million minimum investment, that's required in policy. This deal, as I mentioned before, Spirit will be investing $96 million in real property improvements that will be on the tax roll at the conclusion of the tax abatement. As I mentioned before, that's about $700,000 additional tax a year just to Sedgwick County, not including the school district, not including the city, the state, and so forth. The third thing that we look at is jobs. How many jobs are being either maintained or created by this economic development activity? The policy states that we need to either be maintaining or creating 500 jobs. Well, we're maintaining the 10,940. We're also adding 1,000 new jobs at the Spirit campus. So we double the minimum amount of required new jobs. We maintain a tremendous amount of jobs in the local economy. And the other thing about this is that we typically look at that job maintenance or that job creation over the life of the incentive or the tax abatement. Remember, that's a 10-year abatement. We've got this commitment from Spirit for 20 years. So we're also maintaining and creating those jobs, and that commitment occurs over twice as long a period as we would typically be looking at that. So in terms of our economic development policy, we meet, exceed any of the requirements that we need to say that this is an economic development activity in which we wish to participate A couple of other things to consider. One is that the 20-year commitment from Spirit to create those 1,000 additional value-added jobs will spin off, according to the analysis, another 1,272 indirect jobs throughout the economy. These are jobs that last for the duration of the 20-year period. 1,000 new workers at Boeing, or I'm sorry, at Spirit will support suppliers, home builders, additional retail, additional leisure spending within the community, and that amounts to about $2.6 billion in payroll over the next 20 years. But they're going to be building some buildings, so we're going to have additional construction jobs. They won't last the entire time, but we have temporary construction jobs, about 1,550 will be required to build and support the construction activity over the course of time as this, these projects are completed. That's another $71.5 million in payroll that will be added to the local economy in spurts over this 20-year period. So basically, to sum up, Project Eclipse represents for you about a $2.7 billion in economic impact, money coming into the local economy over the next 20 years. That would conclude my part of the presentation. I think Jeff, are you next? Let me welcome Jeff Fleur to the lectern, and he'll speak a little bit more about Project Eclipse.
Good morning, Jeff, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir, and thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak to you about a very dynamic project that is shaping our community, not only today, but actually, as Brent has told you, will into the future as well. We do appreciate the opportunity to work with your team. As the county manager has said, we work in concert with you on a number of projects. I know a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the numerous ways in which we do that. So again, Mr. Manager, thank you for that opportunity to work with you, you and your staff, on this project. And we also want to express our support for this project this morning from the Great Wichita Partnership. You know, we are very fortunate to have the headquarters of Spirit Aero Systems here in Wichita. They are a global aviation company. I will tell you that as we work with other projects across the country and even globally, it's a highly competitive market for this company. They are a company that demonstrates success in what they do. They stand behind what they say they will do. Therefore, other states want them. Other countries would like to have even a larger presence. So the fact that we had this announcement here for Wichita, I think, is very dynamic in itself as well. They are also really contributing to the transformation that's underway. We have talked about that in Wichita. There's a lot of things that are on the increase here currently, not only in Wichita, but the region, and certainly Spirit Aero Systems is a big part of that. You know, the company also contributes, I think, greatly to the quality of place through their charitable giving. In 2017 alone, this exceeded $5 million by this corporation. They value employee engagement in the community. You will see this through a number of nonprofits throughout our city, but also the region. Their support of WSU Tech is hugely important. Just this last week, we were there for, I think, a remarkable event, talking about the creation of WSU Tech, where it has come from, where it is today, and where it can lead us. It is a national, but also a global model for other countries and companies to see how we're training aviation expertise here, and it's here in Wichita. They spent about $350,000 last year alone with WSU Tech. They're projecting this year to be upward of $400,000 of investment with WSU Tech with training that they need at their workforce. Through Spirit's commitment to invest a billion dollars and also the creation of the 1,000 jobs that we're talking about this morning, the commitment of the 1,000 jobs has uniquely placed our region, our state, in a top 10 list of 2017 announcements. So a top 10 list, there have been only nine other projects in the country that have the magnitude of this type of job creation last year in their announcements. So again, how is it they're helping us position Wichita and the region tremendously as we work with economic development? If you look at the largest projects in the state, this is the largest one within the last five years within our state. Within Wichita, it's the largest since our recession. So again, great rebirth of opportunity here in our city and also our state. As I've mentioned, they position us to be a distinctive city, but also a city of opportunity. These 1,000 jobs are tremendous in that they offer opportunities for those looking for their first-time job. It helps the underemployed in our community. It was remarkable to see a video recently about the generational legacies that you have at Spirit Aero Systems as far as families and them being present here in this community. So the retention of families is huge on their agenda as well. One of the things that is really important to note, I believe this morning, is to kind of give you an update from the MRO show that we were at last week. We had staff there. That's actually a show that, MRO being the Maintenance Repair and Operations Event, that you encouraged us to start going to about three years ago, seeing great success as far as prospects coming from that. One of the interesting things that we did this year, there's been a lot of discussion around talent, not only the retention, but the attraction of talent. These are moments of opportunity to bring new people into our community as well. So we purposely, in our booth design for MRO this last week, had talent boldly placed, if you will, on some of the displays. We noted the opportunities that are happening with Spirit, Textron, Bardier, our suppliers. And what was dynamic is that our staff reported, they literally had people bringing resumes to them so that we could bring those back to these various companies for opportunities. So already seeing attraction opportunities. Now, what we want to do is build upon that. So in seeing that type of response, one of the things that we'll be doing in the months ahead is that we will be attending NBAA back in Orlando where this event was last week. So we are actually thinking about how is it, some of the things that we do going forward, how is it that we have a job fair potentially incorporated in some of these events? Because again, if you've only had 10 of these across the country, we're uniquely placed to be able to attract talent and help grow the economy in that way. So a lot of opportunities coming through this announcement and also this proposal for you today. I think Brent has done a phenomenal job of outlining, if you will, the economics of it. I think hopefully I've given you an idea of some of the things that's positioning us, not only in North America, but globally, the opportunities it will as well. At this time, it's a pleasure to introduce Debbie Gann, who is the Vice President of Corporate Communications and Administrations for Spirit Aero Systems, to make a few comments as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you. Chairman Dennis, County Commission. Before I jump into this one, I want to take just a minute and thank you for your leadership and thank the county crews for getting the HAWK system installed on MacArthur right adjacent to the Spirit plant. It's been up and operating for a little over a week, and I can tell you, it is already making a tremendous difference in terms of keeping our employees safe as they cross MacArthur to get to and from work every day. And so far, we've seen absolutely no traffic tie-ups or any backups, so it's been incredible. And I just want to thank you for that because it's very important to our employee populace.
Thanks for those comments. Commissioner Howell pushed that through, and David Spears, the public worker, are the ones that made it happen, so we thank them.
Yeah.
David, thank you. Commissioner, thank you. I think that project is really just indicative of the great partnership and support we've received from the county commission over the years. As you know, Spirit was created in 2005, and since then, the company's invested more than $2 billion in our Wichita site. With this agreement, we'll be investing another billion over the next five years. As you all know, we're at historic production levels at our site, producing more airplanes than we ever imagined that we could, and we are hiring aggressively to fuel that expansion. I am happy to report that we're actually ahead of plan on hiring. We are fast approaching 12,000 employees at the Wichita site, and we have 350 openings today. So still looking for talent to come in and fill these jobs. Last year, our payroll in Kansas was about $1.2 billion. We expect to exceed that this year. In addition, we spent about $1 billion with suppliers in Kansas, about 550 of them. So certainly, the reach goes beyond the walls of Spirit Aero Systems. And we are a global company, and we do have sites in several other places around the world. But Wichita is our headquarters, it's our base of operations, and we believe it is home to some of the most talented, hard-working mechanics and employees anywhere in the world. So while we will grow in other parts of the world, this agreement really solidifies our long-term commitment to this county, to this community, and to the state. So we certainly appreciate your consideration and just thank you for partnering to help bring these jobs to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. At this time, do we have any questions from the commissioners on any of the issues? Commissioner Rantow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I want to show that I've been quiet in this meeting up to this point. Okay. But I have quite a few things I'd like to say and some information put out there. First of all, I want to say I appreciate that Spirit's decision to expand here, okay? I've never opposed that, and I appreciate that decision that they've made to do. I previously worked at Boeing as a computer analyst, the predecessor to Spirit, and I have a lot of friends that still work at Spirit. And so I think this is very good, very good for our community. That being said, I have to make a decision based upon this particular agreement here to basically spend $7 million, 7.9 with interest, to build a building for Spirit. And I have to answer the question, is this necessary and appropriate? That is, is it necessary for this expansion to happen, and is it appropriate function of government and in our best interests to spend this cash out of our reserves? Or could all this happen without it? And so I do a lot of research, and I take this very seriously. I know there's things that come before us from time to time that we're just expected to rubber stamp, and if we don't, you know, people will criticize and say, oh, you don't like economic development, you don't like this. But that's not the case. I have to look at the facts and balance everything with the cost to the taxpayer and plus and minuses to the community. So I want to share some information rather than just ask people. I've got a bunch of information that I've collected to base my decision on. And so I'm just going to share this information. If anything ends up sharing is incorrect, then I think people can come up and correct me later on because I want to have correct information. But I think it's important to, for any situation like this, we have to see the big picture, not just this particular agreement that's about $7 million in cash to build a building, okay? So I've looked at a lot of things to find out some things that we're doing now that are just related specifically to this project, but there's also been some other things that have been done at the state and local level to give favorable tax treatment to Spirit and other companies that are ongoing, and I think we need to get credit for that, okay? So when I add up all the stuff that I know about so far, I think the total tax subsidy of everything together that we can relate to this is about $100 million. And that doesn't include like H-Pip or PEEK, which they may get, or job retraining money, or other favorable issues that exist at the state level compared to other states that have been quantified, which brings me, so I've added up to $102 million, and I'll get into the details here in a minute. So if we don't spend $7 million today, then the total subsidy will be $93.2 million, at least. It's going to be more than that. So my question is, is that enough? And I have to say yes. I think that should be enough for reasons that I'll explain later, that we need this $7 million in cash to help provide for roads and bridges, police, fire, et cetera, okay? You know, I've asked, you know, I said, I'm not sure that this deal wouldn't go forward without this $7 million. It doesn't make sense because you're getting $93 million worth of subsidies, and there's some other things they'll talk about. And I've been told things, well, yeah, but they have responsibility to the shareholders, or we have to show them that we care, et cetera. Well, I understand they have responsibilities to shareholders, but we have responsibility to our taxpayers, and there's a variety of ways that we have shown that we care at the state and local level. Unfortunately, it's been brought to my attention that when we negotiate with the partnership of all of these favorable tax things that exist, they're not quantified and they're not listed to say, hey, we're already doing this. For example, one of the... For example, one of the examples is a machinery and equipment exemption, which was put in by the state in 2006. For this particular deal, it adds up to $50.6 million. That's there. That's not included in this calculation up here on the return on. It's not even, it's not even presented during the negotiation to say, we're already doing this. But it's listed as an incentive and it's very powerful and it's a lot of money and it's there. As a result of that, I've been told by staff that, you know, that's reduced our county revenues by 10%. That means everybody in this community is paying an extra 10% or you're getting 10% less services as a result of this one particular thing. And I think we should get credit for that and that should be considered in all of this stuff, okay? Additionally, Spirit is not in the city of Wichita, it's an industrial district. This is the agreement between the city and the Wichita. If they were to be annexed by the city of Wichita, the taxes would go up by over nine mils, okay? So that saves them 532,000 dollars a year. Over the 20 years of this evaluation, I mean, that's $10.6 million. I think we should get credit for doing that to helping them out, okay? And there's other things that are out there that haven't been quantified and there's things, like I say, at the state level that should still come to fruition later on. The ones we're talking about here is about $39 million from the city, county, state and school district as far as tax abatements and cash stuff. So that's a lot of money. And I think we have demonstrated and we continue to demonstrate, I have some concerns, I think going forward, I think we need to do a better job when the partnership meets with businesses, at quantifying how much these are worth. Because I can assure you, the businesses know what these tax rules mean to them financially. And when we go in to talk to them, we need to present these numbers and say, we're aware too that we're already giving you $60 million or $70 million in favorable tax treatment. That's meant to help lure you there, we should get credit for it, okay? But we need to have some money to run our operations, okay? So I have to ask myself, so if, I mean, is this necessary? Well, I want to look at, let's look at Spirit, great company. Can they afford to build this building on their own? Well, I would say yes. Just some of the recent information that's came out in the Eagle is we know that in 2017, they had revenues of over $7 billion, net income of $355 million. That's great. They can afford their payer, their CEO, $7.5 million in cash and benefits. They gave bonuses recently to everybody that ranged at least from 9.6 to 12.20 and that's fine, that's good. But that's a lot of money, they haven't quantified that. They repurchased stock, spent $502 million to repurchase stock, they've authorized another 500 million, that's a billion dollars that they're going to be able to spend to repurchase stock. They've got $423 million cash on hand. And then don't forget the federal tax changes that go into effect this year for all of us and businesses. That was big. That was pushed as economic development for everybody, not just Spirit, it applies to lots of businesses, okay? That needs to be kept in mind too. So there's sure, there's plenty of, I mean, they can afford to do this. So I just think that we as a community have demonstrated that we appreciate and want them there. Now, this particular deal that we're talking about here is, we're going to build a building, we're going to create an LLC with the city of Wichita and create a building for them and then give it to them after 20 years. This is unprecedented, we've never done it before. I think it is a precedent that we should not set, okay? We don't levy property tax money to build buildings for other companies. We're having our own discussions about having to build our own admin building, okay? That's where that money, that's the building that that money should go to, okay? Every year, we have to say no to certain requests within county government on what we spend money on, okay? Calm care, corrections, the sheriff, EM, everything. As a result of this, for the next 10 years, we'll have $790,000 every single year less to spend in property taxes. That means we'll have to say no, $790,000 worth a year, every year for 10 years, okay? I really think, I said this before and some other, saying this has been several years ago, this will actually hurt us more than what it's really going to help Spirit, okay? I really believe that. The city is putting money into it and forgiving money for water and infrastructure and yet we hear all the time how they're meeting money for infrastructure. I mean, I've heard things that they had problem meeting payroll the last quarter of last year and they're in significant financial problems. Aren't they talking about reducing fire services? That's a problem. But, I mean, so I think, I just think $93 million should be enough. I appreciate their efforts. I can't be supportive of this today because I don't think it's an appropriate use of taxpayer funds and I don't believe it's necessary to make this deal happen. I'll also say, I'm a little disappointed and frustrated with these return on investment sheets, you know? We originally approved, passed a resolution in December, December 13th. And we were, we had a couple of them, I think the one that we made the final determination on, they said we're going to get a cost benefit ratio of 4.19, now we're down to 1.08. But the problem is, we had two different versions, but they just weren't correct. We made a vote then based upon wrong information. The salaries were wrong, the investments were wrong, one of them didn't even include the $7 million. And that's another thing, I've had arguments that the $7 million was spending shouldn't even be included in here because it's not cash, when it is the same as cash. And that's very disappointing that the partnership that's supposed to be working for us as well would make that argument, okay? To kind of take it off, it doesn't make sense. Now, I do have one question here as far as the, this contract, and we have clawback provisions. Maybe, I'm not so sure, maybe Brent or somebody, okay, here's the issue that I have right now, the version that we have, so the clawbacks are based upon $56,000 in annual salaries, correct?
Right.
And our return on investment calculations, I mean, they put the average salary range for all 20 years and it starts at 56,000, but it goes up to 81,000. And that's, I did the calculations, this is a 2% increase every year, okay?
Okay.
So the return on benefit is based upon having salaries that go from 56,000 to 81,000. Is that, that's correct? Is there anything in the contract that ensures that we start at 56,000, but at the end of the 20,000 or 20 years, it's increased to 81,000, keeping with inflation or whatever costs? I mean, do we have a guarantee or is it, are they going to be at 56,000 20 years from now when, you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
The return on investment is based on that 56,000 going up to 81,000. But do we have any guarantees, any clawback provisions that if they also increase up to 81,000, that that would trigger that? Or is it just 56,000, the whole?
I think it's a base of $56,000 in base wage, not including the benefits over time and any bonuses.
Okay. So my argument is, and I've said this before, when we do, when we do a return on investment and we have clawbacks, we have to have, I think we should have clawbacks that ensures we get that return on investment, okay? If it says we're going to, you know, have X amount of salaries and we're going to base it on a salary range for 56 to 81,000, we need to have clawbacks to ensure that's happening because we are proving this based upon these calculations that give us, you know, we're just barely over one. And I know this isn't exact science, so it might be more, it might be less. I mean, it's not an exact science, so we might even be close to one anyway. But we're proving this thinking that we're going to make whatever you said up there, $600 and some thousand over 20 years or a million or whatever. But that's based upon those salaries increasing 2% a year, every single year, and that's not in here. So that's problematic, right? Even if we're inclined to support and pass this, I would encourage us to table this and redo the language to ensure that that happens. Because otherwise, we, this, we made a good attempt trying to get our clawbacks, but it doesn't guarantee, it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee us we're going to get what's in here, okay? So that's kind of a, even if I were inclined to support this, I want this, this guarantee and this clawback to reflect what's said in here and I don't believe that it does. So I would encourage us to not proceed for that reason and renegotiate that and change that. But in closing, I want to say that I'm not going to be supportive of this particular option. I think $93 million of taxpayer subsidies is enough and not all of them are even included in this ROI. And we need this money to help provide core services and help, and I think, I would really encourage everybody to include Spirit, to reconsider this and understand that this, you know, we have to be able to draw the line. When is enough enough? How many tax benefits, how many ongoing favorable things do we have to put into place? When is enough enough? And I think $93 million, I think is where I could draw the line and let's preserve this cash so we can do our core services. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the presentation by those of you that spoke and just want to clarify and make sure I heard this correctly. I had a couple of things I wrote down, but I want to make sure I heard them correctly. Can you please share, I think it was Brent that shared this, can you please share once again, what was the amount of money that the company has put into the community in terms of charitable giving? What was that number again?
I think Mr. Fluehr spoke to that, about $5 million?
Last year. Was that, that was just last year?
Right.
Okay. That's extraordinary. And then the money they invested in the, into the WSU tech, that's another extraordinary number, that was a?
Probably 350 last year, 400 this year.
Okay, good. Those are the numbers I wrote down, that's what I thought you said, so thank you for that. With respect to previous comments, you know, I just heard a bunch of information I hadn't heard before just a few minutes ago, so I'd like to go through just a couple items there. I don't want to get into a back and forth. I know there's cookies waiting for us, so I want to make this fast. You know, with respect to the decision in front of us this morning, we're not talking about $93 million, we're talking about seven. Most of the decisions on the $93 million, if that's even a right number, I'm not saying that it is. Our decisions others have made previous times, part of that you mentioned just a minute ago was 50, over $50 million was machine and equipment exemption done by the state of Kansas back in 2006. So that's their decision and I think about my, when I file my income taxes, I take advantage of every deduction I possibly can to make my cost to, my payment I make to the government the smallest possible. I don't blame anybody else for doing the same thing. Those are the rules set up by governments and we should take advantage of every opportunity. And I think that Spirit Aero Systems needs to take advantage of every opportunity. This is one that the state set up and they should take advantage of it. I guarantee you that every state across this nation has things like that that tries to lure companies and try to make them prosperous and profitable. And if we did not provide that exemption, I guarantee you, they would have a bigger reason to go elsewhere. So I'm glad that they're getting that type of consideration. And they do provide a tremendous amount of opportunity to our community. I think that these numbers actually are very modest. If you think about the existing 11,000 jobs and do some analysis on that in terms of the indirect jobs that that creates over 20 years, by my calculations, and this may be way wrong, it's because I'm just doing simple math here, but it looks like, to me, like the value to this community because of Spirit is about $50 billion over 20 years. And so their numbers are very modest, they're just talking about the increase. But I'm thinking about the fact that Spirit provides tremendous opportunity for our community already. And so, you know, to the extent that we just lost Boeing a few years ago, I was directly impacted by that decision. And for the record, I do have opportunities with Boeing and I have had in the past, but it would have required me to move. I wanted to stay here. And I love Wichita and so I'm doing this now. But I've worked at Boeing for 11 years and one thing, a couple of things I learned while I was there is that, you know, in terms of a fair playing field, look at the global field. Airbus, I assure you, gets tremendous incentives and tremendous subsidies from countries all over Europe because they benefit from Airbus selling lots of airplanes. Boeing does get incentives, but not even comparable to what is happening to Airbus and to the extent that they are very competitive with each other, I think it just demonstrates that Boeing has done a very good job trying to compete, but Spirit's a great part of that. And, you know, the fact that they're expanding, they're choosing Wichita, I'm very pleased with that. They could go anywhere. They could go outside this country. One thing that's making this interesting right now, and someone mentioned tax laws changing, but let's talk about terrorists for just a moment. That's going to be very hard, I think, on someone who uses a lot of aluminum and potentially other materials as well. So, you know, I think this is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things changing here. The only decision we have in front of us right now is the $7 million. And if I understand the return on investment, Mr. Shelton, maybe you can clarify this once again, but that return on investment is tax dollars to Sedgwick County. It's positive, it's more than one to one.
Right, that's correct.
So for every dollar we spend out of Sedgwick County, there's more than a dollar coming back.
That's right.
Okay, so I don't want to think of government as an investor, but let's think about that for a minute. If we spend tax dollars, it actually benefits the Sedgwick County to be involved in this deal. It actually is more dollars to Sedgwick County than we spend to initiate this. And along with that, 1,000 jobs, billion dollars in capital investment, I'm, I am, I would say, let me say this, I think this is an extraordinary opportunity. And maybe I stand alone by saying it that way, but I think this is great for us to consider this this morning. I'm glad they're choosing to invest in Wichita. I think this is great for our community and for constituents to have more opportunities for job training and careers they can retire from and have, raise their families and educational opportunities. The charitable giving that they give our community is outstanding. So, anyway, I understand from a free market perspective, people might not like the way this works, but every other state's involved in it. It is $790,000 every year for 10 years with clawbacks in place and it benefits the county. For every dollar we spend, it benefits the county to a greater degree than what we spend to make this happen. And in terms of the four checkmarks you've got, cost ratio, net benefits, capital investment and jobs, we meet all four. I would suggest, you know, there are other communities, I would like to know if they have a return on investment calculation because it doesn't make sense they can invest as much money as they do. The return on investment to those other communities has to be a negative number and if they, if it ever turns positive, it's probably decades in the future. And so I just think that we need to go ahead and move forward and I know cookies are waiting, so I'll go in, I'd be glad to make a motion, we would authorize the execution of the project Eclipse Development Agreement with the City of Wichita, Spirit Aero Systems Incorporated and Eclipse Investment Association.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion in the second. Further discussion? I'd like to make a couple, well, Commissioner Enroe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I just want to recognize that, and they have been mentioned, all the folks that have been working very diligently the last several weeks on trying to analyze this from about every direction possible to make sure that we have accurate information and one that clearly represents our involvement in this project. And so Spirit and Sedgwick County staff and the city of Wichita and WSU, the partnership who've been helping us through this, I just want to express appreciation for all your hard work in it. But mainly, I want to express that I'm, I guess the right word is grateful that Spirit would keep us in the game. They had opportunities, they had, I think, my understanding is six other folks who were competing for this investment and expansion. And I have no doubt, although I don't know the facts, what others offered, but I'm sure that other communities have resources where they could offer a richer incentive than we did. So I'm just grateful that the folks at Spirit have made the decision that they want to expand here and continue to partner with us and help our community grow over the next 20 years. The numbers that I focus on, I appreciate all the detail and I have looked at it and tried to comprehend, comprehend most of it anyway. But the numbers that I look at are 2,272 jobs in total that will accrue to our community and $2.7 billion into the local economy and payroll. And this is, this is significant and I think it's worthwhile for us to consider it and in my opinion, it's the, it's the right decision to support it. So I'm pleased to say that I will have part in the decision to help our economy grow for the next 20 years, so, but thank you all who were involved.
Thank you. Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a clarification. I read the wrong, wrong part of the sheet here for the motion. I just want to make a motion to clarify. My motion is to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you for the clarification in the second. And the second also accepts that clarification. And the second also accepts that clarification. I'd like Commissioner Anza. Go ahead.
Well, I accept that this will likely go forward, but I do think that it's important that the, that the agreement and the clawbacks actually guarantee what is given to us in the ROI package. And at this point, it doesn't. So, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we table this and instruct staff to continue discussions to reach an agreement that protects, that actually gives us protection for the salary numbers that are provided for in the return on investment calculation sheet, which is the basis and the reasoning for why we're doing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Anza. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails due to lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta say, I'm very disappointed. Let's make this very clear, that this agreement does not provide for what we say we're going to get. And it's, regardless of what you think about this, we have, we have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers to ensure that agreement guarantees that. We don't have that today. Okay? There's a lot, and I'm disappointed that we won't even want to do that. Like I said earlier, there are things that come before us that as commissioners, we're supposed to just rubber stamp and not question us and not look at the data and just do what we're told. This is one of them, but I, that's not how I operate. And, I mean, what, why even, why even do this? Why even have these return on investment? The first one, when we, when we did the original agreement in December, wasn't even accurate. And why do the agreement if it's not going to guarantee what you say you're going to get in this? Why do it? It's, it's, it's smoke and mirrors. And, like I say, I support the decision by Spirit to stay here, but what we're doing here today will not change the outcome one way or the other.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Spirit Aero Systems and everyone here today, Debbie and Sam, and all the work that you guys put into it. This is a phenomenal project. I'm thrilled to support it. This isn't just good for the county, but this is good for our entire community and the aviation sector. I know we're talking about that, about the seven million dollar figure and about how that's coming out of our budget, but it is so much more than seven million dollars that we're going to be getting back to the community. I know Commissioner Unruh just mentioned that there's a half a dozen in other states that were actively competing for this, but I think we're all smart enough to know there's fifty states that would love to have Spirit Aero Systems located within their boundaries. So, I'm just excited to support this. These eleven thousand jobs over the next twenty years that are guaranteed, the thousand new jobs, these are going to be individuals and families in our community that own homes and pay property taxes, that own vehicles and pay property taxes, that are paying sales taxes to our community. Just the benefits of this project are truly hard to calculate, but it's positive all around. And I mentioned this last time this got brought up, but, but in all my years in elected office, I've never had a project that I truly believe has the beneficial magnitude that this project does. So, I'm excited to see Spirit prosper. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Some final comments for me. First of all, I want to thank Spirit Aero Systems for working with us on this deal. I think it's important for our community. I want to thank GWP for the work that they've done on this, the city of Wichita that was involved, WSU has helped us make the calculations up and down the line, the staff that we have here in Sedgwick County that went above and beyond to try and keep us informed every step of the way and to make sure that we knew exactly what we were doing. Spirit Aero Systems had an opportunity to go to six other locations, and they chose Wichita. Chose Wichita and Sedgwick County because it's a great location. We have great people. We have people that know how to build airplanes here in Sedgwick County. And it's not just Sedgwick County. This deal is going to benefit Butler County, Sumner County, Cali County, because the Spirit Aero System workers work in each and every one, live in each and every one of those counties. So, it's not just Sedgwick County that's going to see the benefit of this. One of the things that we look at is our return on investment. Granted, this return on investment is just above our one to one ratio that we require before that we make a deal on something. And I don't know that there's any commissioner that would say that we're going to go out and lose money on a deal. Therefore, any time that it's positive is a good deal, and we're going to get all this money back. If we invest seven million dollars, we're getting over seven million dollars back. Every single state is offering incentives. The fact that the state of Kansas is offering incentives that one of the commissioners want to include in this, I understand that. That's part of what we're trying to do to entice people and businesses like Spirit Aero Systems to be here in this area. The impact is amazing. Two point seven billion dollars in new payroll money infused into our economy, direct jobs a thousand, average base wage fifty-six thousand, indirect jobs, spinoff, one thousand two hundred and seventy. These are suppliers, home builders, accounting, and so forth. Construction jobs in the short term, one thousand five hundred and fifty. Slide has it up here in bold, two point seven billion dollars in new payroll earnings infused into our community over the next twenty years. We are building a building. We have clawback position inserted in the agreement. Spirit's doing what no other company before them has done. Their investment in expanding these product lines and in our community ensures jobs for this generation and the next generation and beyond. The people that are going to be working at Spirit, high-paying jobs, are going to be building houses, they're going to be buying cars, buying big screen TVs, they're going to be going to our colleges and universities, they're putting their children in our schools. The impact is felt across this entire region, not just in Sedgwick County. I am proud to be part of this. I am proud to support this. I am very happy that Spirit Aero Systems has chosen Sedgwick County to remain and to grow. For, therefore, I'm going to support this motion. Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza, or excuse me, Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
And Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Again, thank you to Spirit for being here. Thank you for GWP. Thanks to the city of Wichita, our legal team that worked on all of this, and the rest of our staff. Thanks very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, consideration of a grant in the amount of three million fifty-one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents for the Kansas Department of Corrections' Juvenile Services, state fiscal year nineteen, funding and approving to enter into contract with Kansas Legal Services for Prevention Services.
Glenda, welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. Glenda Martins, Division Corrections Director. This morning, I'm here to present for your approval the state fiscal year nineteen juvenile grant application to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Division. The grant funding provides juvenile justice programming to prevent and address delinquency. The Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Team Justice approved the grant application on March second, two thousand and nineteen. The total planning allocation for our district is three million fifty-one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. The planning allocation is continued flat funding from state fiscal year eighteen. The funding recommendation for prevention includes the Detention Advocacy Service Program totaling one hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The Detention Advocacy Service Program provides attorney services to juveniles at detention hearings, in case management, alternative programming, to facilitate release from detention pending further court action. The program is provided by Kansas Legal Services. The remainder of the funding application is for three state mandated graduated sanctioned programs. These programs are operated by the Division of Corrections, which include the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, our Juvenile Intensive Supervision Program, and our Juvenile Case Management. The recommendation, recommended funding allocation amount is two million eight hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. The state fiscal year grant application sustains current programming. There are no new FTEs being requested in this grant application, and there are no grant matches. I request your approval to submit, if awarded, the acceptance for the state fiscal year nineteen grant application and authority to enter into contract with Kansas Legal Services. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do I have any questions?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we take the recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here on the second grant award, and this is for Community Corrections to the Kansas Department of Corrections for state fiscal year nineteen. Community Corrections is a state mandated program within the adult correction system. Its purpose is to provide intensive supervision program, based programming to rehabilitate felony offenders in the community as an alternative to prison. Community Corrections is a state funded through an annual grant process administered by the Kansas Department of Corrections. In order to continue to receive grant funds, an annual plan must be submitted on or before May first. The plan is before you today for approval. It reflects a continuation of existing programs. The programs are the Adult Intensive Supervision Program and the Adult Residential Facility. Within each program, staff members provide close supervision and services to assist offenders in gaining and maintaining employment, assessing treatment and training, drug testing, and rehabilitation programming. AISP served two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four clients in state fiscal year seventeen with an average daily population of approximately fifteen hundred clients. Community Corrections agencies receive a planning allocation from the state to use in preparation for budgets for the next year's operation in state fiscal year nineteen. Sedgwick County planning allocation is three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This represents a reduction of approximately one hundred and forty-one thousand from last year. As you know, the legislature is still in session, and the state budget has yet to be approved. Once that budget is approved, we will be notified of our actual award. We expect this part of the funding process to be completed by the end of June. The plan you have contains a great deal of data and information we use in managing all our adult programs. We continue to have a ninety-six percent supervision contact compliance rate since two thousand and fifteen. We have increased services through our high-risk team and are serving a more intensive population. Sedgwick County is the largest corrections agency in the state of Kansas. The plan also contains strategies on how to reduce recidivism, focusing on the very high-risk offenders, providing evidence-based programming with fidelity, work on employment, behavioral health programming, substance abuse, mental health issues, and we target these specific interventions. The Community Corrections Advisory Board participated in the development of the plan and approved it on March fifteenth. It is their recommendation, as well as mine, that you approve it. The grant award is due on or before May first to the Kansas Department of Corrections, and there are no grant match requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I see no questions. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we take the recommended action.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And Glenda, you're back up.
I'm back up. The final is, it's a behavioral health grant application to the Kansas Department of Corrections for state fiscal year nineteen. The purpose of this funding is to continue with existing behavioral health programs within Community Corrections. The budget includes funding to sustain, sustain current positions that provide cognitive skills programming, peer mentoring, mental health strategies proven to be, to reduce recidivism and revocations. There are no new FTEs being requested in this grant application, and there are no match requirements. The grant application budget is for six hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and is due on or before May first to the Kansas Department of Corrections. There was a slight increase this year from last year by approximately thirty-five thousand. On March fifteenth, the Community Corrections Advisory Board reviewed the application and recommends it for your approval as well as I do. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions. And for the record, all of us have been briefed on each one of these items ahead of time and reviewed them, so I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we do read each of these, and you do give us a complete briefing ahead of time.
Yes, we do try to come around and talk with each of you about what we're doing in corrections and how we're working with our clients.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we take the recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Mr. Yost, we have an off-agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioners.
It's a few at this point.
Yes, we do. But I can't make the motion, one of you has to.
But first of all, we do need to have a motion for an off-agenda item. I move that we add an off-agenda item to our agenda at this point, and we will discuss it in a moment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we consider an off-agenda item at this time.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Okay, now, Mr. Yost, who is presenting this?
Are we talking about the forensic science item?
Shelley Stedman will introduce the item.
Okay.
Forensics.
All right.
You bet.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Shelley Stedman. I am at the Regional Forensic Science Center, and I act in the capacity of the DNA laboratory manager. I am here today in place of Dr. Tim Rorig, who you're probably more familiar with, in introduction of these items. I want to qualify my presentation this morning by pointing out that our grant deadline was May seventh, and I prepared this item and submitted it to Mr. Hughes last week with the anticipation of presenting this at the May second meeting, but have since learned that that meeting may not happen, and so, this was the only way that we could bring this information before you in order to still meet the federal grant deadline. I understand you may not have had a lot of time to review it and that there may be questions. As a matter of background, this is a capacity enhancement and backlog reduction program that is administered primarily by the National Institute of Justice. I have been involved with participation in this grant for a number of years now, and it is aimed at assisting DNA laboratories in increasing capacity. The project goals include increasing laboratory throughput, reducing backlog, and reducing the number of samples waiting tested. That said, I feel that the project is directly in line with the county's mission and our mission at the Regional Forensic Science Center. To give you some background, in two thousand and sixteen, we were successful in acquiring some new instrumentation through this grant, and while our backlog has continued to increase towards the end of last year, once that instrumentation became validated and went onto line, the backlog was reduced from one hundred and forty-four days to approximately eighty. So, it does take time, once these instruments are purchased and validated, to see the increased throughput, but I just wanted to give you an example of how this has had a very positive impact in Sedgwick County in the past. This is a formula grant, and the state of Kansas is eligible this year for seven hundred nine thousand dollars. That is an amount in excess of what was available to the state last year, and that's because our population is not growing as fast as our crime rate. As an example, in the state of Kansas, homicides and rapes have increased by twenty-four and twenty-two percent respectively over the ten-year average. And if you look at a local snapshot, which is important because... And if you look at a local snapshot, which is important because the Wichita Police Department is the primary requester for DNA services, the DNA, the lab, the, sorry, the crime rate for violent crimes at the Wichita Police Department has increased thirty-five percent between the years two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and seventeen. That said, some of you may also be aware that in two thousand and fourteen, the state of Kansas convened a statewide multidisciplinary task force, and they set out to assess the number of untested kits that exist in the state of Kansas, and of over twenty-two hundred untested kits, more than half of them reside in Sedgwick County. I have served on that multidisciplinary task force, and just last week, the Director of the KBI issued a letter to all law enforcement across the state and provided the recommendation that a hundred percent of sexual assault kits that are collected be tested. To give you an example of what impact that will have on Sedgwick County, we currently receive thirty percent of the rape kits that are collected in the county for testing, and so we expect that our submissions will triple. In determining how we could best use our portion of this money, I focused on what we could do to increase the processing of the rape kits, and to that end, I've requested in this grant period a total of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The greater portion of that will go towards the purchase of some newer automated technology that will allow us to differentially extract mixed stains and quantify male DNA that's present. That will replace other classical serological techniques whereby we sit at the microscope and scan slides for sperm cells. So we think that we can increase the throughput from weeks to a period of days. Not to mention that this is the gold standard for technology today, and it's far more sensitive, which may be able, may allow us the ability to detect male DNA in forensic samples where sperm cells went undetected. That said, acquiring these workstations and platforms requires that they be validated. We can't just plug these into the wall and start doing casework. We have to prove through tests of accuracy, precision, linearity, that they work and that they will hold up in court. To that end, I have several options. I can take one of my fully qualified DNA analysts that we've invested over two years to train and remove them from casework and assign them the task of the validation. Or I can purchase validation services from a variety of vendors who would come into the lab, conduct the studies, compile the data, and write the reports. Initially, I thought that was our best option, but considering the number of instruments that we need, that would cost approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I decided to take the approach that has been used by other laboratories in the state and ask for a technician for a period of a year while these grant funds are available to conduct that validation at a far lesser cost, just below sixty thousand dollars. The final thing that is a component of this grant, quite simply, is the chemistry, the reagents, and the chemicals that we need to conduct that validation, and you have before you the financial considerations. And if you have any additional questions about the project or my proposal, I would be delighted to answer those.
First of all, thank you for your flexibility in being here today. I know that this was planned to have on an agenda later, but the Commissioners will all be at a meeting for the Kansas County Commissioners Association on the date that we were originally going to schedule this, so thank you very much for your flexibility. I do believe that the grant that you're looking at would be very worthwhile for our forensic science center. I would make a motion that we take the necessary action to approve the grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Andrew, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make note that in your backup material, it indicates that the laboratory is on the brink of a caseload capacity crisis, and I think if we can avoid a crisis by using grant resources, that's good management on our part. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I'm willing to support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was probably going to make a motion or a second, but I appreciate those of you that did that. I want to say I appreciate the presentation. I think you guys do great work. I'm glad that we have some assistance to help us get, get us caught back up and provide maybe a more timely service that's obviously going to be needed. But I also wanted to point out, and I'm sure that you don't want me to recognize you this way, but I do want to make it clear to my colleagues that just want to make sure that you all know that this is also Mayor Stedman from the city of Mulvane that's presenting this morning. So she's not just a doctor at our forensic science organization, but an Sedgwick County employee that we appreciate very much, but she's also serving the city of Mulvane as a city mayor, so I wanted you to know that, and glad to support the motion this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think you will recall, as I do, that the mayor was over stuffing pillows for the Aging Department the other day, so she's a versatile person, and we thank you for your support of the Aging Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, part of this is a one FTE, one position. Will it only be for a year?
Yes. The grant is a static amount, and so unless I would be able to renew that position through this same grant, that would only be for a year.
And so what happens to that employee?
That employee would be hired with the understanding that it's a grant-funded position in the same manner that the other laboratories hire theirs.
Okay. Is this something you think we need long-term or no?
Well, through the routine budget process, which I have some involvement with, we have continued to request an FTE or more than one FTE in the DNA laboratory and are continuing with that request this year. So I do believe it is needed.
Okay, so we've asked for this before, and in the budget process, as we've had to say no, my understanding is there's some debate out in the community whether or not you really need to do a hundred percent or not for law enforcement reasons. I don't know all the details about that, but this is exactly what I was talking about a little while ago. We have to make tough decisions in budgets every year. This request has come up before, and we've said, no, we can't spend county taxpayer dollars to do this. But we can afford to spend seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year to give the spirit to build a building. That's where we're at. So now, we're going to take money from the federal government, it's pretty money and has trillion dollars of debt, and put it upon our children to do something that we ought to pay for ourselves, or we have a debate, yes or no. I mean, we have to make tough decisions. We can't fund everything, but we can fund things, two hundred thousand dollars for DOC and a bunch of other stuff that the local oligarchs want, but we can't fund this. This is a problem. Notwithstanding the debate whether or not you should do a hundred percent or not or whatever, but this is exactly what I'm talking about. We just voted seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, and that project was happening anyway despite what we, you know, elected officials like to say. Now we're faced with doing this. This is problematic, because in the past, I've supported federal funds for equipment, but have avoided doing these one-offs as far as staff because, you know, we shouldn't have staff and then let them go. If it's important, then we need to pay for it. This is very problematic and clearly demonstrates some of the choices that we make and why I try to fight on behalf of the taxpayer for some of the spending that we do that I think harms our ability to do things like this. But it's okay, because we can always shove it off on the federal government, borrow some money, make our kids pay for it with interest later on, and pound our chests and make it seem like we do everything for everybody, and there's no cost to it. So this is not, I mean, this is not good government when you put it all together.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranza. I want to echo the comments. Not only the mayor of Mulvane helped us stuff pillows last week at Aging, but also was at the Pando Initiative fundraising event last week to help our schools, so we appreciate everything you do for our community. See no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
One other thing, we had discussed the possibility of having a second off agenda item, and the second off agenda item was going to relate to a project that we passed last week. I'll let Commissioner O'Donnell explain what's going on with that, and then I'll give a further explanation of our decision not to have an off agenda item today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, and I know our counselor's out of the room, but talked to him about it yesterday, but we passed the Delay No Neighborhood Plan. It was brought by city staff to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Dale Miller brought it forward, and then yesterday, the Wichita City Council decided they want to make changes to it, so they're going to be bringing that back in June. I guess what probably concerns me most, Mr. Chairman, is that if it's a city-led initiative, they should pass it first before it then comes back to MAPC to get reverted to us. So it was completely out of step of normal policy, and as an advocate and supporter and representative of the Delano neighborhood, I expect, you know, a little bit of common sense when it comes to pushing forward something as important as a Delano neighborhood plan, and wires got crossed, and unfortunately, the city has decided to defer that until June to get more community input. So I was going to make a suggestion that we reconsider our motion from last week, but as you requested, I'll not make that motion today.
Thank you. And let me explain that in a little bit. First, Commissioner Ranza, do you have some comments?
Yes, I need you.
Okay. Let me explain it a little bit more. Yesterday afternoon, I did learn that the city of Wichita had not passed it. They deferred it until late in June, and then Commissioner O'Donnell and Mr. Yost and I spoke about it a little bit on whether or not we should reconsider the motion that we had a week ago. So I spoke with the mayor last night about it, and they did send it, or they did defer it. It looks like that there's some concern about the way that the plan was drawn up. It is part of our comprehensive plan, and that's why we vote on it. Even though it's entirely within the city of Wichita and the Delano District, the comprehensive plan is a joint Sedgwick County Wichita plan, so anything that goes into that plan needs to be approved by both organizations. Oh, we didn't have any input to it, honestly, other than saying, yes, this is something that the city of Wichita is interested in, and so therefore we approved it. The problem came about in the fact that Planning Department, for some reason, and I've talked to the manager about it this morning, brought it to us before it went to the city of Wichita, and that's completely backwards of the way that it should have happened. It should have gone to the city of Wichita because it's really their part of it, and then come to Sedgwick County. So we're not going to do that in the future. If it's strictly Wichita, it's going to go to Wichita first, and then it will come to us, or vice versa. If it's strictly Sedgwick County, it'll come to us and then go to Wichita. But the bottom line is, I don't believe that we need to rescind that or do anything with the motion we had last week, because if changes are made, the comprehensive plan is a living document, and I made that comment last week. And so it's designed for changes to be made to it. That way, it doesn't get old, you set it on a shelf, and it's not a plan that can be used for the future. So since they deferred it, I'd say that there's probably a strong possibility that changes are going to be made, and therefore, the vote that we had last week is probably a moot point anyway, because it is a living document, and we're going to have to go through and review the new document before we vote on it again. So therefore, I don't know that we really need to change it, because it's not an official part of the comprehensive plan at this point, unless it goes to the city of Wichita and they approve it, and at that point, if we find that there are some problems with it, we could always change what our position is on it. So I think we need to let Wichita work it out. It's their issue right now, and once Wichita works it out, then it can come back to us, and we can decide whether or not that we do need to make any changes. So that's the reason that I don't think that we need to reconsider it today. Commissioner Ranza?
Well, I voted against that item last week because I thought it was premature. You know, people need to understand that this was one of those things that come before us, that we're, we just expected to rubber stamp. I'm hearing behind the scenes, the reason is getting hung up because we've got developers calling elected officials saying, why did you vote for that? Because some people don't like it, don't necessarily want to do it, and so you really have, it's really not about the, necessarily the merits of the thing. It's local developers calling, pairing up into their groups, and one group wants, one group doesn't want it, and says, hey, why do you vote for this stuff? And that's problematic, but it's indicative of what goes on here in local politics to a degree that people just don't understand. And too many issues that come before us that we vote on, we vote that way because it's expected, not necessarily because of the merits, and this is just another example, in my estimation.
Thank you. Hey, next item, please.
Item J, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting of April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Joe, welcome.
Welcome. Good to be here. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have eight items recommended that resulted from the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of April twelfth that we're seeking your approval for. Item number one is the road improvements, which involves the 2018 painted pavement marking project for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Traffic Control Services Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Item number two is the laboratory services for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Affiliated Medical Services Laboratory for the pricing listed and establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number three, livery services for the Regional Forensic Science Center. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Preferred Mortuary Services at the rate listed for a two-year period with three one-year options to renew. Item number four is EMS post eight remodel and building repairs for project services. The recommendation is to accept the low bid, including alternate number one from Compton Construction Services LLC in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Item number five is the construction of a new EMS post fifteen for project services. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from MultiCon Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Item number six is a 2018 Dodge Charger police package vehicles for fleet management, and the recommendation is to accept the low bid from Davis Moore Automotive in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Item number seven is the 2018 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Marked Vehicles for fleet management, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Rustiac Ford Incorporated in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And our final recommendation, item eight, is the mid-sized track excavator with a wood shredder option for fleet management. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these eight items.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be making a motion, but I will be supportive of colleagues that probably want to make a motion with respect to the EMS stations. I just want to make a couple of comments and have a couple of quick questions. Number one, I'm just curious on the road restriping on item number one. The, we also do crack seal on all of the roads every year. Is that correct? Just want to confirm that.
David Spear, Assistant County Manager. We don't do crack seal on all the roads every year, but a significant portion of them.
Okay.
So. It's not connected to the striping.
I understand. Okay, good. I'd like to know more about the crack seal, but we can talk about that later. I was just curious about that. Item number two, I'm curious about how that was analyzed. You know, it depends on how many of those services are provided. The number, the dollar figure for each one of those services is drastically different. The three different vendors, each one of them has low cost on certain types of services, and so I guess the way I would have analyzed that would be to see how many services we actually need of each one of those items, and then kind of do an extended actually need of each one of those items, and then kind of do an extended cost and then total cost. I don't see that in front of me, so I'm curious if that was done.
I believe it was, sir, and, and what we can do is get the information to you with the, I, I'm thinking that they took the annual usage for the previous year and were able to determine a low overall.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good to know that. Again, I, I support the bid board process, and I'm, I'm sure if that, if that analysis is done, that's probably something I'd be glad to support. I just wanted to ask the question, because the date is not on the, on the material there. And number three, I'm just curious if we transport for Forensics Science Center, if that's a billable service, do we, do we recover any of that money that's used to transport?
I think Ms. Stedman just left. I'm not sure whether we recover any of those.
Oh, you can, you can answer that question later as well. It's just more of a curiosity. And then on, on the next two items, I just want to say I'm really proud of the county for finding more efficient ways to do this. We're, we're going to essentially have refurbished EMS station up north and, and another one, brand new one northeast. I'm really proud of the county for doing those two things. I'm glad to support this today, assuming there's a motion made to do so. I'm very pleased to see that on our list of things to do today. And then finally, I'm curious about items six and seven. Why are we, why are we doing two different kinds of vehicles? It seems like they're very much similar. I guess I'm trying to find out why would we do three of one and three of the other? Item number six is significantly cheaper than item seven.
Penny Poland, Fleet Management. The sheriff has a mixed fleet of Dodge Chargers and Ford Interceptors.
I guess, I'm wondering, but they're, they're used identically in the field. I'm curious why we, why we need two different kinds of vehicles.
Some of the vehicles are used to go off-road if needed.
Okay. All right. Well, okay, let me think about that one for a minute. But, and then finally, I remember eight, I want to say I'm, I'm pleased that we finally have this equipment on our list of things to purchase. It's been long overdue. We, we tried to increase our stream maintenance capabilities a while back, and this is, this is definitely necessary. I did notice that we're selecting the non-lowest bid on this one, but I'm curious as to why that would be.
There were, I believe, a couple of reasons, Commissioner. The size of the cubic displacement of the engine, both of these engines were turbocharged, but as you'll notice, one had a little more cubic inch displacement, giving it a little more power. And when this piece of equipment is in the stream bed, or when it's picking up a log or concrete, there are times when they need that extra power, horsepower, in order to accomplish what they need. So this, this is why you noticed this was a proposal, because it was not just going to be strictly the price, but there was consideration for that. Also consideration for what was known as the relief and boost pressure. The boost pressure is almost like a, kicks in a little extra power for it to adjust to whatever situation they meet in those stream beds.
Okay, good. And that last picture there, is that, that's the tree trimmer attachment?
Yes, that's a tree shredder.
Tree shredder?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that looks pretty exciting. I'd like to see that working someday. We need a video of that. Need a video of that. Anyway, I'm pleased overall with the report today, but I will let someone else make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I was just going to say on, you know, item number eight, I still continue to have concerns with our specifications, that sometimes I think we do this to get at a certain, arrive at a certain decision. But I want to talk primarily about items four and five, the EMS buildings. One of them is the repair and mire district, and the other one is the new one in Commissioner Unruh's. This is stuff that we've been working on for a long time, and I think originally, when these came up, they were proposed to be built. Both of them are going to be new buildings for 1.4 to 1.6 or something, maybe even more. It's around $3 million. Now we're going to get these two done for less than 1.2 million. So we're saving considerable amounts of money, probably doubling the number of facilities we can get compared to what we used to. I know in the past, I remember an EMS station has a vehicle and a couple of people in it. There's no sleeping quarters, but you have a little place to, to sit, and we're spending 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars on each facility. And $800,000 for a new one is still a lot of money, but it's significantly, I mean, a bit close to cutting it in half. And so I think this is a good move in, moving forward, that'll help us get a much, much better bang for our buck. And I appreciate staff and commissioners. Like I say, this is something we've been trying to get done for a few years now, and we're finally getting there, and I appreciate that, so I'll be supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh?
Well, I'd like to, second Commissioner Ranzau's comments, first of all, and then secondly, make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items Kilo Through Victor.
Move to approve Items Kilo Through Victor on the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for April 18th, 2018. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on the public agenda for the Board of Fire? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, again. County Manager recommend you approve Consent Agenda Item Alpha.
Thank you. Move to approve Consent Item Alpha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to adjourn the Board of Fire and reconvene the Board, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Will, how you doing?
I'm good, Commissioners. Will Dear, Assistant County Counselor. Legislature is adjourned right now, so we don't really have a lot to report. Both of our bills that I mentioned, the Election Commissioner Budget Bill and the Urban Area Designation Bill, to my knowledge, haven't been signed by the governor, but they're in transit. I don't know if Mr. Yost has heard something different, but.
Any questions about the legislative agenda? Seeing none, thank you. Next item?
Other.
Does anyone have anything for other? Well, I'd like to say a couple of comments. I don't see anything else. Earlier this week, I was able to go to USD 259 Good Apple Award, and I was pleased that they recognized a member of the CDDO, Peter Daniels. He was recognized by Dunlap Transition Campus at Chisholm, and the description read, "Peter supports our community at SCC, SCDDO by providing hub services to those with disabilities. He directs the business leadership, BLN, supporting, supporting those with disabilities in our community to connect with the employers and jobs, and also improves the community as a small business owner. Appreciated." I want to make sure that I pass on the entire Board of County Commissioners appreciation for all that he does for, for not only our citizens, but the students, and I want to thank him. And just on a side note, the reason I was there was because my son, who teaches at Northwest High School, was also receiving a Good Apple that night, so I was there for a couple of reasons. But congratulations on Peter. Anything else for other? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Thank you. We do have an executive session. Commissioner Unruh?
Mr. Chairman, I have two motions to make here. The first is both related to executive session. The first is I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 11:35 to consult with an attorney for the, for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
We have a motion, and I will second that. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And Commissioner Unruh, next item?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:05 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 12:05.
We have a motion. I will second that. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.